I'll call to order council time for Wednesday, March 3rd. And begin with old business approving the minutes of the last meeting. Entertain a motion on that, please.
To approve, Madam Chair.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the last meeting without objection. Moving on then to motion passes, item. 1.2, do we still, yes?
We'll be pulling item 1.2 from today's agenda and we'll bring it back to the council in the future.
All right, thank you. Moving on to the Harmony Sports Complex, 1.3. Ahmad?
Good morning, Council. Thank you for your time. This morning, we're, I'd like to get council approval for a resolution allowing the Harmony Complex to submit a pre-application with the city of Vancouver. This property is located on the southwest corner of 192nd and Northeast 18th Street. County owns that, but it's within the city of Vancouver jurisdiction. So they like to submit their site plan and as part of the process, they have to get a pre-application. But, and whatever's on the preapplications is non-binding to the county. But this would just basically allow them to do the submission of the pre-application. We do have a Glene our Parks and Lands manager would like to give a little bit of background about the project and the property and the next step. So with that, Galena?
Thank you, Ahmad. You largely covered today's presentation, but we do have a couple of slides just to go through. I'm not sure who's driving it. If we could go to the next slide, that'd be great. Here's the location of the Harmony Sports Complex. As you see, there's a little cutout. Was trees right in the middle of the site off of 192nd. That area is not currently leased to Harmony. The rest is. We've had a lease with Harmony since 1996 and they've developed most of the site. Some was our help, like the ball fields that you see at the bottom of the map, some by fundraising grants and things of that nature. Next slide, please. So just a touch of history for your reference. The site was purchased by Public Works. As I mentioned, it's been leased to Harmony since 1996. In 2018, we successfully received a grant with Harmony for site improvement, specifically parking improvement. In 2019, there was an earlier pre-application with the city and the 13th Street come up, as some of you know, intersecting the park in half. In 2020, we worked on many different options with Harmony and the city. The city had met with Harmony and us a couple of times in the project logistics. This concept plan in front of you, the 2021 version, is something that Harmony Association wants to discuss was the city proactively to see what other requirements the city might have. So as Ahmad already mentioned, there is a resolution in your packet. We're asking you to approve this, letting Harmony have a discussion with the city. And if we go to the next slide, I believe we have a couple of more points. But here's the concept plan that I mentioned earlier. So the cutout area that I showed on the first map is the area where you see the soccer fields. Those are plans. There are different phases of the development project. So the grant that we currently have would be for the parking lot improvement specifically. Harmony does have plans to later on build up other facilities, including an indoor facility. Next slide, please. And just to summarize again to what Ahmad said, we do request that council approve that Harmony Sports Association meet with the city and have the pre-application conversation. It is not binding. It does not replace the current lease agreement with Harmony Sports Association. If at a later point, the sports association wants to come back with a request for additional land to be leased and things of that nature, we'll bring it back to you for consideration. That is all I have. Do you have any questions? We might actually have somebody from Harmony on the phone if you have questions for them. And I believe our project manager, Robin Washington, is on the phone as well.
Okay, are there questions of the council? I think I don't hear or see any. So thank you for going over these things with us in our one-on-ones. I think that has helped us to have no questions for you at this point. So if there are no questions, I would entertain a motion then for resolution 2021 03 04.
Madam Chair, I move a proposal of the resolution to allow Harmony Sports Association to discuss the proposed plan with the city of Vancouver.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to do as was just stated. And the resolution number is 2021 03 04. Is there further discussion?
Madam Chair. Yeah, just I'd say thanks to Galena and her team and Ahmad for bringing us to us and being proactive and working with the Harmony Sports Complex folks to get this project continuing to move forward. So thank you for doing that and allowing us at least to be able to help them in this process.
If there's no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business. Let's see, not sure who's covering this 2.1. Kathleen, do you?
I believe it's Susan who's on.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Susan Wilson, is this your, thank you, go ahead.
Yes. Good morning, Council. Within the next few months, staff is going to be requesting an amendment to the 2021 annual construction program. These are mainly minor housekeeping items to stay within compliance with the County Road Administration Board and state and federal auditors. So I'd like to talk about some of those changes before we go to hearing on this. Next slide, please. So the annual construction program is a state mandated document adopted on an annual basis via resolution. So in order to stay within our perimeters of building capital projects, everything must be listed in the annual construction program. The annual construction program, as most of the council knows, is the first year of the six-year transportation improvement program. The annual instruction program has a lot more details such as listing grants and timing of projects and also partnerships. And we just want to make sure that we are stay within compliance. We stay with our, in our good standards of practice with the County Road Administration Board and also our agency certification with the federal government. One of the things I do want to inform the commissioners, just to remind the commissioners that this takes a unanimous approval of the council that are present. Next slide, please. So we adopted the 2021 annual construction program in November 2020. And since then, we've, we've had a couple of changes, about $394,000. The main change that we are dealing with is the Northeast 78th Street, Northeast 39th Street signal installation. A development agreement was approved at the end of last year. I believe what happened with this is by the time we, by the time we discovered this, the tip paperwork, the transportation improvement program and annual construction paperwork was already submitted to council. And so it was just a timing issue. So we have about 171,000 that we'd like to add to the annual construction program. In addition, Northeast Munch Road up by the Grist Mill on Cedar Creek to 414th Street, we need to add additional land acquisition monies to that, to that capital road improvement project. There are no relocations. Some money was programmed in 2020. We just need to move some of that to 2021 with a minor increase. With Munch Road, the bulk of that money is coming from the County Road Administration Board. It's the rural arterial preservation monies to improve safety and preservation along that roadway. It does require a 10% match. Small delays in Highway 99 pavement improvements. We just need to move some federal grant money and some county road fund from 2020 to 2021. And then the signal timing evaluation verification and enhancement signal project. Our partnership with the Washington State Department of Transportation was delayed a tad bit. And we need to transfer that money from 2020 to 2021. And so we are in the process of actually developing a contract with the state. The attorneys have approved it, which will be taken to council within the next couple of months or so. So those are the major changes. Do I have any questions?
Are there questions of the council? I don't see any. On the, I just have a real quick one. Clarifying the 78th and 39th Avenue signal, it's a timing issue, you said?
Yes.
Yeah. So, if I may, this is Rob. So when we put together the DA, the money is, exists for our contribution to the DA. But what happened was is because it ended up being more than $100,000, we have to capitalize it. Once we capitalize that investment into the program, that moves the money from one column to another column inside of the budgets. So this is not asking for more money. It's just we're moving columns within the budgets and we're making sure that all the paperwork reflects that.
Okay, thank you. That helps.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Nope, go ahead, Susan.
Next slide, please. So if the council's okay with these changes, we will proceed to request a hearing within the next couple of months. A reminder, it does take a unanimous vote to amend the 2021 annual construction program. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay. So this, what we are seeing today and now, we're not acting on this now. It's going to be at a hearing, correct?
That is correct. It does require a hearing.
Yes, okay. All right. Are there questions to the council before we leave this?
Do we need to adopt the changes or not?
Not, not, not through this process. We just want to inform you before we go to hearing to make sure everybody's okay with the changes. If there's any additional questions, we can.
Thumbs up then. I'm okay with the changes.
Thank you, sir.
I'm okay with the changes too. So if anybody is not okay with the changes, you should speak up now because we're going to have a hearing. Unless we find out some other information, of course, we would speak up then. But as has been stated maybe two or three times now, this has to be a unanimous decision. So please be sure to make your questions known so that they can be addressed prior to our hearing if possible.
Right, fine with the process or with the amendments.
All right, thank you. No other questions? Hearing and seeing none. Thank you very much, Susan and Ahmad for this presentation. Appreciate it. Moving on to 2.2 draft ordinance for the Board of Health. Is Taylor here?
Yes, Chair. I think Lindsay also had, might have some input on this.
I can certainly do that. This, Taylor, I think, brought this issue up. We talked about it at a prior council time. The fact that our code needs to actually codify what state law requires now that we are a home rule charter county to formally establish a local board of health. So that's what the ordinance before you would do. It would create within our county code, the official Clark County Board of Health and would keep the current composition as it is. So it's really just formalizing what we've already been done. And that formalization is required by state law, like I said, now that we are a home rule charter county.
I don't have anything to add to that. That was well said.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions to the council? Okay, we can take, well, this is a draft ordinance. Do you have any questions then about this draft? And are we acting upon this draft today?
No, this is just for council review opportunity to ask questions. And if it looks good, then we can schedule for public hearing.
Okay. And I don't see or hear any questions. I, I just, I don't know. I guess I wonder if, if lines nine through 11 are required, not all of the lines, but actually not having, not, I guess it explains why we are doing it now and not five years ago. But, you know, I, I just, I didn't know if it was actually required that we state that or.
It's not, and it certainly could change to, we are a home rule charter county and are creating it pursuant to state law.
I'd actually prefer that. I don't know what the other counselors say or think, but, and so I would, you know, entertain thoughts on that before you go ahead and amend that. But I, if we, you know, we can, we can state that the RCW states this and that we are a charter county and leave out that, you know, we've been remiss.
I, I support the change. Obviously, it was something missed years ago. We're trying to clean this up. We have lots of turbulence right now with proposals at the legislature and the governor's secretary is trying to change this whole structure. And we may be writing a new resolution or not have the ability to write one at all in the future. So it's just dotting our i's and crossing our t's and getting the paperwork taken care of. So I have no problem changing, as Lindsay just suggested in the chair's reports.
Other comments of the council? We okay with just exercising a couple of those words?
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, thank you.
Right, I will do that and then we'll get it scheduled for hearing.
Thank you. Counselor reports. Work session requests.
I'm sorry, I was slow on the trigger, Madam Chair.
Counselor Berman.
I just thought it would be interesting to many that the Southwest Washington Workforce Group is putting together a strategic plan. And it has three goals with supportive strategies and indicators. And the, two of the main strategies deal with business recovery and growth, as you might expect. And another deals with economic nobility, mobility by focusing on the underserved population, particularly, you know, in the population in general and as affected by COVID. So that's going to be worked on for a while. And I think it looks very, very promising and very much needed in our community.
Thank you for that report. Any other reports? Okay, thank you, Counselor Berman. We'll move on now to work session requests.
Yes, good morning, Council. This is Ahmad with Public Works. About a year ago, or a little bit more than a year ago, we did a workshop presentation to council about our ADA transition plan. And within that, we discussed about the issues about sidewalks and repairing, what needs to be done. And you allowed us to go up to some work and come back to you for some options and that we want to present that to you. So this is the request that allows us to do a workshop with you and some of the options that we come up with to present for you.
Any objections to this work session? Okay, let's go forward with it then. We'll put that on the schedule. Thank you, Ahmad.
Thank you.
Lindsay, do you have anything more for us with policy?
I do. I have a couple of things for you today. One, the Friday legislative delegation call has been canceled because the legislative delegation is on the floor right now. And so just with schedules and attendance, didn't seem like we could pull that together. And on that note, what's called the House of Origin cutoff is this coming Tuesday. So House bills have to get out of the House, Senate bills have to get out of the Senate. By Tuesday, of course, there is the exception for bills that are what we call NTIB or Necessary to Implement the Budget. Those bills can happen at any point in time and often are trailers that go along with the budget bills. So it's not to say that if a bill doesn't pass now that it's dead. You know, they say that nothing's ever dead until the legislature adjourns. But if it doesn't get out of the House or the Senate before Tuesday, it has a much less likely chance of coming through. Although, one of the big exceptions, of course, would be things like the public health funding bill. That's significant enough that it would, would be necessary to implement the budget. So those discussions will continue and I'll talk more about that in a moment. So on that note, House Bill 1152, I just got, and I will send this out to the council. I just got this during our work session a moment ago. The proposed floor striker for House Bill 1152, this is the public health restructuring bill. But if you have immediate thoughts, I can convey those to Josh. So it would keep the proposed comprehensive public health service district centers would keep creation of those. Would make four regional centers, two on each side of the cascades. They would have some statutory authority, some permissive authority. They would have to establish a formal contractual relationship with at least one regional center, which would be like our local public health, you know, office. So there would have to be some degree of formalized relationship between the two. Each center would have a coordinator that would be a Department of Health employee. So that, a lot of those components are still in there. In terms of the local board of health composition, it would be an equal number of elected and non-elected members of the board. The non-elected members would be the same categories that we saw before. The public health, consumers of public health, community stakeholders would require a tribal member if there is a federally recognized tribe within the county. And so, of course, we would have the cowlets here in Clark County. And does specify that only the elected officials on the board of health could set or modify any permitting, licensing or application fees. But those fees would be the only thing that would continue to be the exclusive authority of the elected officials. Otherwise, all the other matters for the board of health would be that entire group. So from my read of it, it is making some, and again, I need to go through in a little bit more detail. I didn't have time in the last few minutes. But it's making some minor tweaks. It's trying to make some concessions. You know, I, I recognize the fact that they're clearly hearing the concerns that are being made. But it sort of feels a little bit like somebody saying, I'm hungry and you hand them a cracker. It's like, well, I appreciate the cracker, but I'm still hungry. That's a bit what it seems like. So I don't know if you have any thoughts that you want me to convey to Josh today?
My thought would be from what we have heard from Dr. Melnick. Correct me if I'm wrong. This is the group, the restructure or the proposed centers that Dr. Melnick indicated would be just yet another layer of bureaucracy? Is that true?
It would. And I think, you know, as I've mentioned before, this is one of those problems where the legislature has an idea and then it's not going to totally work. And so they try and compromise and say, well, we're not going to get rid of the olds. We'll let you keep the old, but we're also going to do the new. And then it just is redundant and people then 20 years from now wonder why we created it. And so I think that, that, yes, it does still create it. There is without a doubt redundancy. Sometimes redundancy is helpful. You know, it's why we have backup sewer pumps. Redundancy is helpful, but it's not always necessary, so.
Okay, and then one other thing, and then I'll let other counselors chime in. But sorry, I'm kind of dominating today and I apologize. But the, the additional members, do they, do they also add the health providers in the jurisdiction or is it just public health? I mean, it looked like, maybe I heard wrong, but is anybody who's actually administering healthcare in, besides public health, included in the list of people that should be on this board of health?
Yes and no. So yes, it's included on the list. No, it's not mandatory that they be one of them. So the category is public health, healthcare facility or healthcare providers. And so you could have, you could have a physician, a nurse, you could have a public health staff. You could have, you know, hospital administration. All of those people would qualify. There is language within the floor striker that says you can't have two non-elected members that have the exact or very similar qualifications. So you couldn't have two nurses. You couldn't do that. But you could have a nurse and a public health staff and an epidemiologist and, you know, different public health backgrounds. But there is no requirement within the bill that you have a healthcare provider. A public health staff would be sufficient.
Thank you. Other questions of the council or comments?
Madam Chair.
Counselor Berman.
I don't know how many other counselors agree with this, but my position would still be that we make it clear that we join with other counties in opposition to both parts of this bill. It just is not needed for this backup sewer, as you interestingly referred to part of this. So, you know, it's just not a, it's neither, neither side of this bill is a, is a good move.
Other questions? I, I mean, I would agree with being in opposition to it. I mean, I mean, I continue to be in opposition of 1152 in just about every form it has taken.
So I would ask Lindsay, if you could just send me what the current bill is, I'd appreciate that. And, and I do intend, unless I hear differently from the rest of you, I do intend to speak out at the Legislative Steering Committee for WASAC. As far as I know, there's no change by the Association of Counties opposing the bill. But certainly that could change with these recent amendments. But, so that, that's what I intend to do. And Lindsay, if you could send it to me so I can peruse it, thank you.
I will. I will send the link. I'll just send it to everybody. A link with the bill and then also this, the summary of the proposed striker. I don't have the exact language, but I have the staff summary of the striker.
Thank you. Other counselors?
I, yeah.
Counselor.
Yeah, um, I think it's, I'll start at the end. I'm, I'm still not in support of it in its current form. I think that it's come a long way. It's a very different bill now than it was, than the first, than the first draft. That doesn't necessarily mean that it's good yet. But I think recognizing that a lot of the reason that it has changed is because of the work of WASAC and WASALFO, especially staff and lobbyists carrying our voices forward. And in some of the stakeholder group conversation that I've had, that's come up that this is still not something that anybody involved in this, in these, in these work groups can hold, you know, can heartily endorse. But how we oppose it is something to consider the nuance of trying to continue to oppose it in a way that keeps us at the table, because we are at least getting changes at this point. So I, I think that's important for us to keep in mind that as soon as we walk away from it, it's probably not going to die. Given the makeup of the legislature and how much the governor and the new secretary seem to want it, I think it's important for us to consider continuing to try to make our voices heard and try to get the changes we want to see, but not to throw up our hands and walk away. throw up our hands and walk away, so that we can continue to influence it.
Yeah, no, that certainly makes sense, and with 105-day session, and like I said, this is going to be one of the big bills, it's NTIB, so it has a long way to go. There's plenty of time left on it. And it's, I agree that there needs to be a recognition that if the legislature is proposing some significant new ongoing rent, revenue streams for public health, that coming in with an attitude of, "We don't want any change, but just hand us the money," doesn't always resonate very well. And so, having that approach of, "We need more money, but this isn't the way to do it, and let's work together to try and find something more cooperative." That, hopefully, that keeps us at the table, and so, everything I've, you know, everything I'm hearing is that there's still very much going back to the stakeholders into WASAC, and WASAC and Masalfo have continued to have that, that voice, so. But I also think they're planning on trying to get this out, we will have a much better idea on that funding mechanism. We're expecting the revenue forecast to come out March 17th. After that, within the few days, I anticipate that we will see the majority budget proposals out of both chambers. Depending upon what we see in that, that will give us a much greater idea of the seriousness of the legislature's intent to add foundational public health funding. And I think if, if there's not much in there, then the calculation becomes, how, why are all these changes worth it if we're not getting much? If there's a significant amount, you know, that, that changes the equation, so we'll hopefully have more information here in a couple of weeks.
So, I, I guess I would have a question about, first of all, our voices being heard, and the idea of walking away, number one, what what would be some amendments to this that our voices could be heard on, how, how would we amend this? I, I guess one way would be to whittle down those additional people on the, the board, the local health board, to make sure that we don't have too many, that it's unwieldy, that would be one way. The other proposal, I just don't think really, it doesn't sound like a good idea at all, and so, how would we improve that? I guess that's one question, or the second question, and then the third question is, with regard to the funds, that we're want, more funds that we're wanting, if we create another bureaucracy, those funds will likely have to go partly, at least partly, to fund that, so I'm not so sure that, you know, this, that having more funds for public health is any good if a lot of it is shoved to this additional bureaucracy in the first place. I mean, because that's how it seems like it's going to go, if you have more people doing more things, you're going to pay for that, and it's not going to go to the existing public health, you know, infrastructure. And that's, that's what Dr. Melnick, for instance, has been asking for, for, you know, the years that I've been on the council, he, he thinks that we do need extra money, but if it's going to be diverted to other things, we're not gaining anything, and we're gaining bureaucracy, and, and maybe more trouble, so, I'll leave that, and find out, yeah, Councilor Blens?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to engage that, because I think I, we often don't agree. But this is something where, as you stated your opinion just now, I'm actually in full agreement with that. I think that creating additional bureaucracy, in order to fund additional bureaucracy, is not serving the people who need public health services. And that is something, as I've participated in these work groups, that I've expressed, and I've also been clear in these work groups, that I'm expressing my own opinion, and conveying what I think may be the opinion of the council as well, but not trying to speak for the body. And with regard to suggestions we can, we can make, I think that first, looking at the trajectory of where this bill has been, and where it's gotten to, it, we, it started with regionalization, which we all said, "Oh, no." And then they moved it to comprehensive public health service districts, which was a little bad, still not good, but a little better. And with these new regional centers that are also still, in my opinion, not serving the need, it's, it, they're pared back a bit, and some of the problems that, like Dr. Melnick had outlined of who's responsible for whom, and what are the reporting issues, some of those are improving. I would hope that if we continue to push on this and say, "Let's continue to refine this, it's still not meeting our needs," that because my, my, my opinion or the view of it that I have is that they really want this to pass, and they really want it to pass with support, so that they may continue to keep whittling it down. I'd say like, in my ideal world, they've, they're codifying the, the foundational public health steering committee and an advisory board, and talking about those boards needing to advise on how these, this new bureaucracy would be created. If we could continue to request that more of the work on what should be done about public health is done by those committees, without actually creating new law or bureaucracy before those committees have a chance to talk about the needs of the public health system, that, that would be my ideal. We've had foundational public health stakeholder groups and work groups talking and meeting, and they wrote a report that was issued just before this bill was, was drafted. So, there are experts, people like Dr. Melnick, Dr. Melnick has been involved in that, talking about what they think we need, and if we can get that work to happen, without creating something that we may not need, and that could actually do harm, that'd be great, in my opinion. So, that, that's, that's, in terms of talking about staying at the table and continuing to work on it, continuing to urge, "Oh, not yet, guys, not yet," as opposed to, "No, get out of here."
Yeah, I just want to clarify, I'm not saying about walking away. I do think we should continue to engage and keep whittling it down, so that basically, it has no use. And, and other people are against it, because it's not even doing the function, you know, that they intended in the first place, because so many, you know, things are being excised from it, and so, you know, I think part of it in that way too, is, "Well, no, we don't like it this way, okay, let's, what would you like?" Then, okay, well, let's do this and that, so, I, I, I agree, Councilor Blens, we should stay in the conversation, I'm just saying that as it is, we should also say, "We don't like it as it is," and we really want to improve it, so.
I think that's absolutely reasonable, and I also did, did just want to add that I think, you know, we also should keep an eye on that, that funding bill, and how the monies will be allocated, should they exist, because, yeah, we may very well hit a critical tipping point where we're not funding public health, and this isn't going to help us. I don't believe we're there yet, there's still so much, relatively speaking, there's still so much more time that this thing could change. But that's something to keep an eye on, and at a certain point, it may not make sense to urge it to move forward.
And I think that there are, so just on the funding, the, under the striker, it's 65% based upon the percent of revenue for shared services in the proposed decision package of the new foundational public health funding would be for these shared services, so there is a requirement that it be 65%. That's, you know, it's kind of the glass half-full, glass half-empty, you could say, "Well, there's 35% of look at all this new stuff," but then there's 65% that goes towards, you know, more people. And there's a number of things that I'm sure WASAC and Masalfo are talking about, that are kind of the trying to, you know, can we make this a short-term pilot? Can we, you know, have some of these boards come in, can we look at doing a study? Can we have these regional advisory boards look at what are our problems? You know, we, we had the coronavirus pandemic, you know, we didn't plan and prepare for it. I mean, it's not like we sat there and said, "We know this is going to come in five years, so let's do a study on how we prepare for it." And so, really taking the pandemic to say, "Let's have a study, let's look at where the failures were, let's look at where the positives were," and then we can figure out more comprehensively over time, how we do a significant restructuring, so there's some of those kinds of things that, or even within the composition of the local board of health, make it permissive, not mandatory, you know, that jurisdictions are allowed to add these, and if they, the legislature really wants to do it, they can have some carrots in there that say that, you know, there's additional grant funding available if the board of health are expanded. So, there's a lot of those kind of things that still, I think, are very much on the table to, to do, and WASAC and Masalfo will continue to, to push for. But that's all I had for this morning.
Are there other comments from the council, just regarding this discussion, before we leave it? Okay, I don't see any, thank you, Lindsay. And it looks like there's nothing else here for our council time, so, but we do have an executive session that we need to leave this meeting for, and sign in for pending litigation for 20 minutes. Okay? Thank you, we are adjourned.